I'm being recorded. Clark will not be here today, as many of you may know. His son is being sworn in tonight. Meeting was supposed to be tomorrow. Apparently switched it today, so it's kind of an important family function, I guess, for him, as well as being the chief of police and all. That doesn't hurt, whatever. However, at this time and for the first time, I will open up the meeting Tuesday, September 5th, under our new assumed name of Suffolk Central School District Board of Education. Very exciting. The regular board meeting, like I said, Tuesday, September 5th. And I will say Rampo Central, so correct me, because just old habits die hard. Suffolk Central School District Board of Education. Let the record reflect that all board members are present, with the exception of Clark Osborne. At this time, Chair would take a motion to go into effective session. For the purposes of, one, reviewing with the attorney for the Board of Education email communication from parent. Reviewing with the attorney for the Board of Education legal issues pertaining to award system pending legislation. Reviewing with the attorney for the Board of Education status of collective taxing bill. Reviewing with the attorney for the Board of Education status of litigation pertaining to alleged negligent supervision. Five, reviewing with attorney for the Board of Education termination of employment or substitute persona work and status of federal litigation. Six, reviewing with attorney for the Board of Education legal issues pertaining to possible pilot agreement with Bremer Living. And seven, discussing with the superintendent of schools individual employment agreements for unaffiliated employees. Move. Amani, move. Second.
Second.
Matt. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, abstentions? Unanimous.
......
Like the first day of school? Like all those parents. I don't have that memory. Anybody think they had their kids in school finally free? Sorry, teachers. But I apologize in advance for summer and lack of any type of routine or special. But at this point, I would again recall to order, on a very rapid day, recall to order the Suffolk Central School District Board of Education meeting Tuesday, September 5th, 2017. 1.06, the Code of Conduct, Court of Conduct Public Hearing. So at this time, I will open up the hearing for the Court of Conduct, Court of Conduct attached to the minutes, but it's wed them, and it's an opportunity for the public to make comment with respect to any changes or decisions. Okay. I take that as a little conference. Okay? So 1.07, apparently it's split up for me, I never get it. 1.07, Court of Conduct Public Code of Conduct Hearing. Thank you, Angela. And now 1.08, since nobody wishes to speak on it at this time, feel free to email a due date if you would like with respect to that. But I will close the public hearing, Court of Conduct. However, if we could all please stand with the allegiance. Dr. Adams, what?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the minutes of the regular meeting, August 22nd, 2017. Chair would take a motion to accept those minutes as so stated. Teresa? Second. Amani? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's one, two, three, four. And abstentions? Matt and myself, as we were asked. Superintendent's comments?
I would like to use my comments to show brief video to board and to the community.
Welcome to the Suffolk Central School District. It's a great time to be a Mountie.
My name is Mothra, and I'm senior this year, and I can't wait for spring week.
As we think about what's in Suffolk Central for our students, our parents, and our broader community, it's a tremendous time for us to highlight the tradition of excellence, that is Suffolk Central Schools. Opportunities K through 12 for our students to access boundless technology, phenomenal teachers and staff, a supportive community that are unparalleled anywhere in this area.
We love Suffolk Central!
Hi, I'm Steph Shada. I'm a reading teacher at Suffolk Middle School. Welcome to Suffolk Central. We have so many things to offer you. It's great to be a Mountie.
Giving kids the opportunity to pursue personal interests. For example, choose their own reading materials and choose them right now. And for the first time, we'll have three- and four-year-olds in our youth program at Viola.
At Suffolk High School, we have a philosophy of both quality and quantity. We want to do the very best we can for as many students as we can.
Hi, my name is Kate, and I'm a junior. I'm really excited about playing the 11th and 12th grade orchestra this year.
I think our Mounties are going to notice a variety of new and innovative advancements in our school district. From our brand-new pre-kindergarten program, our course offerings at both the middle school and the high school focusing on enhancing 21st century skills in preparation for our students taking over the world as they graduate from Suffolk High School in the future.
We love Suffolk!
We love Suffolk Central!
We love Suffolk!
I'm at Suffolk Central School District.
We love Suffolk!
Chief comes with a lot of permits. Do you like seeing yourself on the big screen?
I like the lighting on that one better.
The video is supposed to capture part of what we're trying to do in our strategic plan, and that's to promote ourselves as a premier school district, you know, distinctive brand, and I think it gets captured here. And with our rebranding, our renaming as Suffolk Central, this is the way we wanted to kick off the year. Shared it with the faculty this morning. And a lot of energy in the room, the auditorium at the high school, which, you know, should be. It's the day before school begins. But there was a lot of excitement, a lot of energy. And so we're looking forward to a great school year, a great start tomorrow. Hopefully, everybody will be patient. You know, there might be some traffic jams here and there, especially if you're not used to it. And it's to be very careful. You know, all summer long, the kids have been home or camp or whatever, but now they're at the bus stop, they're walking to the bus stop, they're being picked up, and you see the big yellow buses. Be careful. So we're looking forward to the school year, and it starts tomorrow. So hopefully, we don't have too long of a meeting tonight, but that's important.
Charlie Sharon, this is great day, you, uptown district, awful. It's not on yet, though.
Yeah, it's going to be posted in about eight minutes.
I was just looking.
We're sharing it with the community this evening at eight o'clock.
Thank you. And very glad that you both shared with others, for all of us to share your thoughts.
Yes.
Thank you very much. We also did the walkthrough for the board members that weren't there. We did do a walkthrough, and it was awesome to get that perspective.
I like the roof.
The roof, not going out, we're going back. We were able to see the planetary dome from the outside, which was kind of cool.
And the inside.
And the roof looks, you know, I mean, I'm not a roof person, but it looks pretty cool.
I've been on my share of roofs, and it's great.
And I'll have you know that the board members who were there had to climb up the ladder. We used skinny ladders, so I hope. But we survived. Anyway, and, oh, the courtyard at Viola. They have pumpkins. All right.
And the PK wing, I have to give a shout-out. The PK wing, the work that was done is fabulous. I know it was in a short time.
And I think the entrance, walking up to the door that they come into with the little paws.
Having their own entrance.
And then the paws in the classroom leading them in, I think it just looked great.
A shout-out for the high school students who did all the artwork. Really impressed by their murals, because it's a student that did it, freehand, I'm told, which is really impressive.
And the PK cloud was posed to Mrs. Casillas.
PK hasn't put a board now like that, that I couldn't put my head on.
Okay, so I did say corrects, and I'm going to entertain this. But public participation, Mrs. Public Participation has the action items, only, that's 2.01 through 2.14, which are listed behind me. This session will last no longer than 30 minutes. Sorry. And so if you have any remarks with respect to any of those items before me, please step up to the podium and state your name, school affiliation, address your remarks to the board. And again, I just caution, any comments pursuant to our policies, 12:30, 14:30 through 40, we cannot have comment regarding any, anyone, employee, or student of the district. There are ways through those policies to get to the board, so it's, so I'll leave it open. Okay, seeing none? You guys really want to get school tomorrow? Seeing none, I will close that portion of the meeting. So we have 2.01 through 2.14. I'm pulling 2.14 for separate discussion, so as far as I'd like you to consent agenda for 2.01 through 2.13. Chair would take a motion to accept those as so stated. Teresa?
Second.
Amani? Any discussion with respect to any of those items? No? No? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, abstentions? Unanimous. Okay, 2.14, Chair would take a motion to accept 2.14 as so stated. Teresa, second. Paul? Discussion?
Okay, is there anyone who can pull the item on the screen? Because I just need to look at the board. So there's nothing attached?
No, there's nothing attached.
But it's not working. So this is about to approve using a particular vendor to do superintendent evaluation for the upcoming year, 2017, actually, the current year, 2017, 18. I assume this is the vendor that was used for 1617, and I reference to that. So it doesn't state what the cost will be. I know we had had a discussion in the past about the cost. Was prorated last year because we only had a partial year when we finally come back with the vendor, so I would need information about what the funding, what the budget for that type of contract will be. And my other concern is that we did not really follow up on the vote that we took in April to have a full board of, you know.
I'm trying to pull it up.
That's okay.
It's worth it. Trying to maneuver through it, do we have?
So we have forma committee, we voted to forma committee in April of 2017 in order to be a committee of the whole. So all seven of us would be part of that committee to look at different tools, compare and contrast, and find out something that would work best, that's acceptable to the board, as well as Dr. Adams, and also hopefully economical as well. So I don't recall any of that, you know, work yet, so I think it's premature to take that vote, even though our deadline is September 10th.
Anybody else have any comments? I don't want respect to, I don't know, I don't want respect to the evaluations, you know, the reason I put it up on there is just, you know, getting some feedback from board members. And knowing what the instruments for that go through the process, I know these board members, with the exception of two board members, we've seen these other instruments, and one indication I've received from board members is that they want to use this also at discussions, like, you know, without going into detail, what is also acceptable and pleasant to superintendent schools, which is part of the process in the past, in consultation with or in discussion with, and I think it's important that he agree with that. And I think, as we've said before, you know, the instruments are generally the same, because there's different verbiage with respect to the same information. The key to this one is the process by which it, and it's a fair process to not only be more rigorous, because our time is money, but it's also, and since it is all voluntary time, it's worth more money. But it's also fair to superintendent, because as you know, he's able to upload any documents to support his evaluation at any time throughout the year. He can upload it, change it, download, whatever, whatever the case may be. That's unlike any other instrument that we have used. So, I mean, everybody can make their own decisions, obviously, but that is pretty part why we're coming on here to.
No, I just, I liked the process of the tool we used. I found it much more user-friendly. Agree upon it is key. Superintendent does have to agree upon it. But do you, I don't recall what the full price was, to be honest.
Eighteen hundred.
Was that the prorated, or is that the full? So the full price is eighteen hundred?
The prorated amount, I don't recall which one, it's like 400, I think, or something like that.
But eighteen hundred is the full, for your sheet back?
Eighteen hundred, maybe it was eighteen fifty.
So what budget item would that come out of?
Part.
Because we had to ask Teresa. So forming a grade.
She's there. She's not my mom, though.
Okay, so my concerns are that, I'm not sure which budget item this is coming out of. My other concern is we haven't really researched other tools at all, as we have delegated to ourselves as committee to research other tools, to come together, meet, and discuss them, and compare and contrast. None of that happened. So I understand you have conversations with some board members. I don't recall a conversation.
I know, I know what your opinion of was, because you looked at the email, which was my phone, but just with respect.
No, my email was simply, when do we meet? When do we follow up on our April vote? When are we going to meet? Because we have September 10th as the deadline. It wasn't, they can choose which one, because I didn't think that was a whole thing.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? And just for, just for the, we've been, we've been doing superintendent evaluations for how many, how many years? We've gone through, here we keep going, this last two years ago, it's a process. We look at instruments that have been put, the instruments from NISVA and the like. So we have one that was currently on file, that is a combination of three other instruments. So to say that we haven't ever did that is, I don't think it's accurate.
There are new ones, but there are new ones that are developed as we speak. Just because we looked at them over two, three years ago, definitely before my time, the last time it was evaluated and chosen was before I was on the board, that's quite a bit of time. So new instruments are developed.
Okay, so all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Abstentions? Matt? Aye. Okay. Sorry, I can't see you. I certainly can't hear you. Okay, so, so, all abstentions? All right, so now I will do 3.01. 3.01 is a 2017 assessment report by Mrs. The Rivers.
As I do annually this time of year, I'm going to just summarize a little bit about the spring of 2017 assessments, as we start the 2017 school year. I'm going to start at the top and talk about high school APs. You will see, Eric, do I have like a red dot up here?
You did, but it's a little.
No.
Not right now.
Okay. You'll see in the bottom right corner, 89% of our students that took AP exams pass them. Pass on the AP is a score of three, four, or five out of a scale of five. You'll see overall, the number of exams is down a little bit. We're in a little bit of a downward trend the last couple of years. I'm going to talk a little bit later about why we believe that was down. That 89% proficiency rate on the APs is well above the New York State and the global averages. And a few particular highlights. On the left side, you see these five AP exams are the five AP exams for which students, every student, every Suffolk High School student who took these exams scored a three or higher. So they had 100% proficiency rates. I'll talk a little bit more about computer science principles in a moment. On the right side, you see a long list of AP exams for which the average score of our Suffolk High School students exceeds both the New York State and the global average. So all those three lists there on the right are all exams that fit that criteria, and the ones that have asterisks are those exams for which our students scored their highest average score in the last five years for Suffolk High School students. So we see that we have a lot of students doing quite well in these exams. We did see, while the overall participation was down a little bit, we did see increased participation in about eight or nine of the AP exams. And particularly, I want to point out, computer science principles, which was, last spring was the first Suffolk High School students to participate in an AP exam. There were 21 students. I already mentioned, all of them were proficient, earned a three or higher. Seventeen of those students are continuing on to computer science A, which is a slightly different computer science. The computer science principles is more of a problem-solving approach. The computer science A that those students will be taking this year is more of straight programming. And they're required to program the right way. And one of the reasons that we believe the AP enrollment is down slightly is because of the very large number of dual enrollment courses we have at Suffolk High School. I've mentioned these in the past. We have partnerships with all these different universities. Our students take these classes at Suffolk High School, taught by Suffolk High School teachers, but in addition to their high school credit, they earn college credit from the granting institution indicated here. This year, we've added the classes that are asterisks. A couple of partnerships with St. Thomas Aquinas and with Seton Hall have increased the number. All told, our four most popular courses there, with over 100 students each, are the College English. In its first year, we have over 100 students enrolled in that. Pre-calculus, and the Supa down in the bottom right, the Public Affairs and Economics. So each of those courses has over 100 students in it. Overall, the total enrollment in dual enrollment classes is 1,180 students, which gives our students the opportunity to earn over 3,500 college credits.
That's awesome.
So that, isn't that amazing?
Wow.
So we're, you know, and so when we look at that AP number dipping a little, it's because this number has increased over there.
Can I ask a question, Barbara?
So I know that all of the universities, all of any credits are accepted in many universities across the nation. Have we looked into which other credits among these offered will be acceptable to, we don't know each university, obviously, but many of them?
Most universities will give credit for any of these. The difference is in some universities, and it really has very little to do with the granting university, it has much more to do with the university of attendance, they won't give elective credit. They won't give credit toward a major. And that's the, that's the university where the student is attending. That's their choice to do. And that, Eric, that there's no rhyme or reason to that. Other?
Thank you.
That's awesome that we borrow teachers.
Isn't that?
Yeah.
In many cases, there is actually a resume process, and if someone that requires Supa requires the teachers to attend certain professional development, in other cases, they actually become adjunct faculty of those universities.
And it could save half a year to a year of college.
Speaking of experience. Hundred percent.
A full year.
All right. Moving down to a little bit younger students, we have some Regents examination data from, this is from the June 2017 administration. First, we take a look at the Common Core English Regents. We have, we had a slight decrease in the mastery and the overall percent passing. We were expecting that. Last year was the first year of the Common Core Regents, and they told us they were going to keep the passing rates the same, and they told us this year was going to be held at a little bit higher standard. So we're not surprised by this. Gives us something to work towards, but it was, it's not, it's not shocking. Common Core Algebra I, we see now, we have the, this is the third year of the Common Core Algebra I. We see each year, our percentage overall passing has increased, and the percentage passing at mastery has increased. Geometry, despite the issues with this exam, New York State issued three corrections to this exam, the latest in the middle of July. We had about, just a slight increase in proficiency and a bit of an increase in mastery. So this exam was somewhat problematic across the state, but our students still did fairly well. Algebra II, this was the second year of the Common Core Algebra II, and we saw that we had a slight increase of overall proficiency and a decent increase in the percentage at mastery. So those are all the math exams that are now in place, obviously, as we saw with geometry, there's still some issues to work on. Social studies for now has remained unchanged, and you see our results are very consistent. Slight increases from year to year in passing or mastery, but very consistent. Science likewise has had little change to it, and we see that science, again, is also very consistent, a little fluctuation here and there between mastery and proficiency, but largely consistent results. Social studies, we do have some changes coming up. This year's current 10th graders will take this transitional Global History and Geography Regents exam in June of 2018. And then we'll have a district decision for the current 8th and 9th graders to take either the transitional or the new framework exam at the end of 10th grade. I don't want to go into detail about that here, because whatever decision we make, when we make that decision, we'll share the details of it. Basically, the state is offering a transitional exam before we get to the new exam. The biggest difference about the 10th grade, there's some pedagogical things that are different, and how kids have to answer questions, but it's really important to know that the test will no longer cover two years of history, it will only cover 10th grade. So that's, that's a major, major change. The new U of History exam will be offered in June 2020, and no information on these has been offered yet by the state. The changes to the science exams that we've been anticipating for, I don't know, four or five years now, the state has yet to pass those and make a decision on those, so these are, the science exam changes are still yet to be determined. Next, I'm going to talk a little bit about our grade three through eight assessments. And the first piece of information I'll share with you is the projected timeline for changes to these assessments. This school year, we'll be getting a new two-day assessment. Traditionally, these tests have been three days for ELI, three days for M.A. This year, they're being changed to two days for ELI, two days for M.A. For the next three years, that'll continue assessing current standards. In the 2021 school year, that'll move to assessing the next generation standard. So we have sort of a three-year timer for that, which is the longest time, the amount of time the state has ever given us at the elementary and school level. In particular, the two days of testing is changed from three. It's a district decision on which days to test over the three days, so we can make a choice. We have not made that decision yet. And the test will have fewer questions, it's only over two days, but the same format. The, all the annotated questions will be released as they were this past year, and 75% overall of the assessment questions. So there's still some of the multiple choice that aren't being released, but everything else is going to be released. Here in Rampo Central, as has happened over the last, oh, not Central, excuse me, as has happened over the last several years, we had a number of students opt out of the assessment. So what you see here is the percentage of students testing in each grade level. You'll see that in the elementary grades, it ranged from 65 to 75% of students took the test. At the middle school, it was much lower than that. As a result, it does not make sense for us to look at aggregate scores, because we had so many kids who didn't take it, that it doesn't make sense to say X number were proficient because of the number we had who didn't take it. That doesn't, there are some impact of that, those decisions. The first one is that all of our elementary buildings and our middle school will not be adequate yearly progress because they did not have 95% participation rates. That means they are not eligible for designations such as reward schools or blue ribbon schools.
Is that being enforced?
Yes, that part of it is. We don't know yet if the other side of it is going to be enforced yet, but this part of it, no school has received any designation that, anywhere in the state that did not meet the participation rate. It's also in terms of just a mechanism for us, it means we have to look at multiple measures for AIS, that's best practice anyway, so that's not an issue for providing remediation or enrichment services, we would want to look at more than one measure anyway. It does still, for the kids who take the test, we do have some student-specific information, and we are able to make some curriculum implications, implications from the information we have. We receive these reports, they're called benchmark reports, you don't need to be able to read this, don't worry. The fact that you just see red spaces, red The fact that you just see red spaces, red cards tell us that's a place where the students we had who took it fell below the regional average. So we can look at that from a curriculum perspective, and over two or three years, if we see kids are falling down on the same standard year after year, that helps us to know that maybe we need to look at a different way to teach it to that standard. So that's some of the information you can find from the whole group. Individually, we, for the students who take it, we do get a report, we can see what standards the students did well on, what they might be struggling, individual students might be struggling with, what their areas of strength are. And one of the data points that some of the principals are going to be talking about in their C6, I wanted to kind of preview for it, because it's previewing you for it, because it's a little bit technical. So if we take a look at this first student here, who is a female student, she's regular ed, she took the grade four ELA, this is from a couple of years ago, she took the grade four ELA in 2015, she earned a level two, which in the region was the 28th percentile rank, and the state was the 38th percentile rank, which means of all the kids in the state who took it, she did as well as 38% of them. The following year, when she took her grade five ELA, she earned a level three, and her state percentile rank was an 86%. So this same student in grade four in ELA did better than 38% of the students across the state. In grade five, she did better than 86%. That's a lot of growth. So that's saying, really compared to the same other kids on the same test, she did significantly better. The second student listed here, we see in grade four math, was the 56th percentile in grade four math. In grade five math, the following year, they dropped to the 45th percentile. So this is a way of looking at students' performance who did take the test in comparison to how they ranked compared to other students who took the same test. It is a measure that some of our principals are using in their C6, so I wanted to kind of give you a chance to look at it, so that when they talk about it, they're not seeing it for the first time.
That's only one of several.
Right. I took, out of the hundreds of kids who took it, I just took one snapshot.
No, one of several. This is one of the measurements, one measurement.
No, this is the New York State test.
No, right, but we, we look at more things than just the New York State test.
Absolutely. But it's one measure. So in their C6, they'll have NWA, they'll have DRA. Where they want to use the state test, this is one of the measures they can use.
Are our regional scores always higher than the state?
Always. Our region is Westchester Rockhampton, the Dodgers.
Yes, it's always.
Minus Yonkers.
Always higher.
Always higher. So I wanted to also include a little information about the strategic plan and what the role of assessment is in our strategic plan. The Teaching and Learning Committee met last spring, we had a prioritized goal and a metric. Our prioritized goal was around the standards-based curriculum and appropriate rigor. And when the committee met and thought about how would we measure this, the committee, the entire Teaching and Learning Committee took into consideration a variety of measures. They wanted to include a measure at each level. They wanted something from elementary, something from middle school, something from high school. They wanted to use an existing measure taken by all students, they did not want to introduce a new assessment. They said, what data do we already have that we can use? They also recognized the importance of reading honor above grade level by grade three, which is a critical research-based benchmark. So taking into account these decisions that the committee made when they were deciding on, well, how are we going to measure if we're doing this well? Based on these criteria, the NWA map and the English Regents, we felt best met all of these criteria. So the committee came up with the following metrics, which say by 2020, 85% of Severn Central students will achieve the 50th percentile or higher in reading on the spring NWA in grades three and seven. And you can see below that, our current baseline from this spring, 66% of grade three students met that benchmark and 77% of grade seven students met that benchmark. The second part of that is that by 2020, 99% of Severn High School students will pass the Common Core English Regents with 85% of students earning mastery. And you saw earlier that 97% of this year's student, Severn High School students passed that exam, 76% mastery. So we do see these, these goals indicate some work for us to do, but we believe they're attainable and they're, as indicated by the committee, they're measures that we already have in place and that all students take. And I just want to close with this quote, which I have closed every assessment report for the last nine years, because it's that important. Task scores and measure of achievements tell us where a student is, but they don't tell us where that student can end up. The text will be there.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I think so, yes. The deep breath. Just thinking, just the area shaded in red, obviously, but in our areas we know we need to work on, about how are they compared to prior years? Were there areas that are repeatedly showing or are they new? How do we compare those?
So those reports are not available until very recently, and so the teachers haven't had a full opportunity to look at those yet. So you will see an update on that in the C6.
So did we have the same areas to work on in prior years?
I don't know, because we haven't all looked at the reports, they were just made available.
Okay, thank you.
That's actually, the picture I showed you was from last year, because it was that they just made it.
Okay, thank you.
You make reference to the NWA. So where is all that information? And can it be shared?
All that information is in the computer. The teachers, all, the teachers have access to that information for their students. I shared the pieces that were connected to the strategic plan. I think last year, I shared some trend data.
Yeah, I think there wasn't any, I don't believe there was any information on NWA last year. In fact, I think the statement was going to come up this year.
The principals often include it in their C6s, they include, many of the principals include a measure of growth that their mean score, the projected growth is X number of points, and then the principals project some amount of growth from that.
Okay, so do you feel that the, the numbers that you have here for your, for your strategic plan, towards the end? Based on, based on how our students have achieved on these tests, are your, are your goals, are they, are they realistic? Are they, are they overshooting? Are they sandbagging? What's, what's your opinion of that?
So they're being, so the, the criteria here is the 50th percentile. The NWA does not give a proficiency and it does not give a grade level equivalent, it gives a norm. So the 50th percentile is literally based on all of the students who took it, and it's like eight million across the country. And it's the average for that grade. So to say that 85%, this, this goal basically says that 85% of our students are going to score higher than the average student across the country. That's what that says. I think it's a great goal to work for.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm asking, and I understand what the goal means. I just want to know, 85% is that?
Too far reaching.
Is it too far reaching or is it not far enough?
So that was something the committee discussed, and that's sort of how we got to 85. There were some who won at 80, there were some who won at 90, there were some who won at 99 or 100. And 85 was part of the conversation that ensued from that.
Thank you very much. And if anybody has any questions that they think of later, send me an email. Okay. We are on 4.01, that is the policy annual update, first reading of miscellaneous policies that are listed on the, in the public content of that higher level. So I'll just turn it over to Teresa, who's chair of the committee. I don't know if anybody has any questions, comments with respect to any of the policies so listed.
What questions do we have? Any, anyone? First, go first, or am I to go?
Okay, so this is a little bit, and I know some of them don't have a lot of changes. Not to say, in general, this group was kind of big to, to go through. Yeah, we just had the holidays, so we haven't really had it for a while. So we'll be able to email for the questions before the next.
As always. Just a fresh reading.
A couple of quick, quick, quick observations. Adult school volunteers, for example, would be 45, 42, or...
Forty-five?
Yeah, 45, 42, don't forget that. Here, just understandably, volunteers not having access to information, certain information regarding students, that's by law. How do we identify personally identifiable information, like a name could be personally identifiable, what falls under that?
It would be getting access to the student records to see their social security number, their health issues. We don't want volunteers to have access to that information.
But personally identifiable, like a name?
Well, they'll be able to access their name, but not their address or their mother's name.
Right. So there's a, there's, that's, that's a term that's known what falls under it? That was my question.
It's under 5,500 is where personally identifiable information is defined.
Right, because it refers to it.
To that.
And it lists what, what these are.
Yes.
They're all over the place. So in the smoking, 1530, smoking and other tobacco use of school premises. So there is a new law that was passed in this section, is in compliance with that?
Close the number again, Bonnie.
1530, smoking policy and other...
Yes.
Is that the New York, New York State regulation that just was passed?
Yes.
Nothing else?
No.
So it's being compliant with the e-cigarette part and the electronic cigarettes regulation, right?
And we've also made sure that the code of conduct is consistent on that same language.
The homeschool is 1741, and all there is is the reference, we didn't change anything, I'm assuming.
That's correct.
We reference to a law, is it? Moreless children, we need to read that a little bit more. Into scholastic athletics, I have a question regarding 5280, seventh and eighth graders playing at the high school level is basically what this policy handles, and the explanation says that this has always been the practice and that we are just including it in the policy.
Yes, we, the practice, according to Andy, has, we've had this practice for a number of years, I know predates me, and, but we've never had it formalized in terms of a policy. And it's something that the state said that you either formalize it in terms of a policy or you discontinue allowing kids to play up.
So we will continue the same policy that we...
The same practice, just not formalizing it to policies, should be in the policy.
That's right. And so the, the athletic placement process includes the state testing, they have to pass a certain level, dictated by New York State in order to play up, basically.
Yes.
I like that it included something about readiness, you know, mentally, physically, how do we evaluate that? Somebody who passed a state test but is not ready to play or mangled with, you know, people three, four years older, and that's been a, an issue.
You know, part of that is input from the coaches. And, you know, some would immediately think that the coaches, they want that kid to play, but it's not always the case. I mean, the coach says, you know, physically breaks spessin, but just is not ready emotionally. Or maybe the kid's really great, you know, emotionally excited, and you can, you know, diagnose every play out there, but just doesn't have the physical tools to do it. And then the additional requirement that Andy is imposing on them is that if you move a kid up, that, that player should be able to participate at least 50% of the time. We're not going to move a child up that might supplant an older student or an older player and then sits on the bench the entire time. It's, it's been a wasted year for that athlete.
Have a purpose for that student.
And, and when that doesn't happen, because we monitor it, we do follow up, we hold, coaches accountable for that.
But the policy does not dictate a 50%.
It does not.
It's a procedural.
It's a procedural.
And just, and just to add, if I can, Andy also, we talked great length on this, and he also says that they're, they're very cautious in, in those circumstances of when they bring somebody up, based on age appropriateness and everything Dr. Adams said, and that that doesn't happen that often. And, you know, that, that whole knocking somebody out to get somebody up and then they sit on the bench, you know, we see that happen quite often or have in, in other circumstances, not necessarily in the district, but even in others, you know, outside of the district. So we did have a big conversation, and he said it doesn't happen very often.
We do see it more often in maybe individual-type sports such as gymnastics. Some of those kids will naturally move up. We see that across country. We've had one or two in wrestling, but it's kind of more of the individual sports. It's not necessarily in football. Yes, it, it does happen in basketball, or it's happened this past year, but, you know, a lot of, a lot of our cross-districty runners, some of them, you know, do really well in seventh and eighth grade, and so they, it's natural for them to move up.
So it's left to the coaches' discretion at the end? The policy leaves it open to the coach at the end to make that distinction? Is there a committee that looks at the player individually and...
There's not a committee that looks at that.
So it's after each individual?
Yes.
That's okay, that, you know, that's been all right to administer, basically.
But this year, there were a couple of instances that we weren't pleased with the decision because the student was moved up and didn't play half the time, didn't play a quarter of the time.
Who's watching now? The athletic director is watching? Is it left up to the parent to watch? I mean, who's, who's watching?
You know, sometimes the parents will let us know, of course, but the athletic director...
That says, that's not exactly why I asked the question, that was left to a parent who's going to complain compared to one who will not. So, I mean, there needs to be checks and balances.
There's not left up to the parent, for the parents, obviously.
We shouldn't, no. But we should have checks and balances that we build and house, I believe, so that it's not the parent only that's watching. We're also watching ourselves. That's, that's my point.
Swimming is the other area.
There's a lot of detailing to that procedure that needs to be built, created in this policy or whatever.
Well, and the regulations, there's policy.
It's definitely an area where there's a lot of variances.
Yes.
So student wellness, we are now aligned with that state requirement that has been, so this is, the SHAC committee has brought this forward, it was required to be compliant by, I think, June of 2017.
And then the, the state subsequently came down and said, as long as you have it in place by the first day of school, and we're treating it as though you're approving it tonight, even though you're not approving it for another two weeks, we're, we're implementing it as though it was...
Being implemented, you're saying?
Yes.
That was going to be my question, because I only had it at one. Okay, and my final question is on the, the facility use. And I'm just making one small recommendation to the addition that is there, there's only one line added. The superintendent of schools shall establish reasonable regulations which shall include appropriate use of fees for the use of school district buildings and grounds by authorized users. If we can add to this recommending adding with Board of Education oversight, not letting that stop for Adams, but for future superintendents, we don't know, you know, how we're going to establish these regulations. So some oversight would be probably a good idea rather than just one individual. I'm recommending adding Board of Ed oversight to this phrase.
So just, just to be clear, and just so we're all on the same page, this is what has been happening, which is why it wasn't a large conversation, although we always have conversations over the district use and the way it's done, but... But, um, this was just really putting in policy what's already been done. And of course, as a board, we can always pull, pull the policy to look at if we feel it as a problem. So that was really the thought behind us at the policy committee meeting. So again, uh, we, you know.
Well, I think, I think the, at least, you know, the policy, when the policy committee were recommending this type of language, in part, it was, it was really memorialized the practice, because it hadn't been, which we could find, you know, every time, you know, we go through these policies or like what's the practices, try to keep it between the policy and the regulation, um, try to keep them, um, one enforcing the other. The thing with the, with the fifteen hundred, or actually I should say the regulations, regulations are not for the board. The board doesn't create regulations, they don't oversee regulations necessarily. However, we can, we can view or review regulations because regulations also support our policies. So I think in part we left it in here where it gives the superintendent the authority of something that they've been doing anyway. Um, so now it gives a clear authority to do it. Number two is even though it would be in a regulation, which he would do anyway, it also allows more flexibility. I know we talked about maybe you're doing it once a year, have the board approve it, approve them at the end of the year, but sometimes things happen and as, as you've been going through it, you find out whose, you know, what kind of organizations are using the fields, they're, they're so diverse and it's sometimes they don't fit into the little chart that you have and decisions need to be made. And so you needed to be somewhat flexible to a certain extent for the superintendent to, uh, adjust things. Now that being said, of course, there is for the most part, ninety-nine percent of the organizations that use the field will fit into this criteria, one of the many criteria that are, that are set forth. So it's really a, maybe, if it even happens at all, very small percentage where it would be something that's not in the regulation. So it's not like we don't have any authority over it or we don't, won't be able to review it at all. If it's a regulation, we can review it. So like I said, I think just having it here allows, especially throughout the year, if the board reviews it and approves it in June, then it can't change in July unless we review it again and change it, or changes it in July or in December or whatever the case may be. And we're just not that flexible in the sense that we don't meet here every day. So that was part of the reason, at least for me, why, um, my input with respect to the committee recommending this type of language.
And just, and just to add before, cause I know you want to give more feedback, but uh, with this policy in particular, I think to Teri's point, you could have an organization that doesn't, or fees or however they fall, that falls between two criteria that we're not going to meet before he needs to make a decision, because these organizations might need a decision that they're filing the application and they need it before the next meeting. So that's where he needs that, some flexibility in doing that. I mean, based on the fact that we've been doing this anyway, and this is just memorializing it here and that we haven't had any major issues, I don't have a problem with leaving it like this, with the caveat that if it is, or we find that there is something that we need to look at this again, we, we can do that. So again, that's.
Does anyone actually, um, disagree with just having the clause so that there's, there's oversight by the Board of Education in future years?
I think we do have oversight.
We have oversight.
I'd rather not, I'd rather not put the language in there that the Board of Ed has to review it. We already have oversight.
Oversight is always.
It's in, it's in another, it's in another policy where it gives oversight over regulations.
So also, um, what we've had these conversations, actually, we don't have a chance to have a discussion about this because, um, you know, we were not volunteering last time. Um, regarding some confusion as to how we are applying the policy that's already been in existence. The policy hasn't really changed much except for that additional clause, as we see now, um, for this confusion. So how, how do we, how do we clarify, um, to the public? Maybe post something online with details of exactly what, you know, the requirements are and the use, um, allowed, the use.
The regulation will be on the website, just where the policies are. If you look at the policies online, it'll have a policy and then the next will be the regulation. So it will be.
But have we visited that regulation and I know that's not Board of Ed.
No, that's, that's what they're going through now. And it's, it's just a, it's a huge endeavor, um, because I don't think it's been looked at for many, many years.
We, we, we spent a lot of time discussing the fact that we need to have consistency throughout the district.
Of our sign.
Signage, messaging, compliance with how it's handled. You know, the difference between a dad throwing a ball with their kid and a coach instructing a player on our fields and, and what are the differences? And then, you know, a, a large group that's, you know, just, you know, hanging out on the fields versus, you know, they're a smaller group that is just, you know, family running the track or, or kicking the ball around, you know? So, you know, there's been a lot of discussion.
Is that being worked on? And is that for us to be able to see soon? I mean, the school year's beginning, these conversations have been happening throughout the summer, especially with people out, you know, in good weather or hot weather. Um, I mean, I'd like a little bit of uniformity, as Teri's is saying exactly, clarity of the signs, uniformity amongst the signs and also amongst how we're enforcing the, the rules. So the policy hasn't changed, but there seems to be confusion.
So the regulations perhaps may change in the sense of whatever the criteria are, because they're not all fitting in to what, what was the original, the original.
So you're saying a more detailed explanation or categorization of what we've had?
Yes. But it's, it's like I said, it's, they're still working on it. And that's it.
Do we have a timetable or?
We, we challenge them. We challenged the administration and, and the other people, everybody in the district to come with what their recommendations are, to provide to us what their recommendations are, have some conversations about it, you know? And I'll, and I'll just be honest, you know, uh, you know, we know that, you know, well, these, these people were kicked off of the turf fields and, you know, it's, it's, where do you find that middle ground where people can still use the fields and use the facilities that their tax money pays for, however, keep them in good shape, maintain them.
Prepare for games.
And prepare them for games for, let's say preseason, whatever that may be. So we've asked for them to give us feedback by the time we do have the next policy meeting, which we haven't scheduled a date yet, but we will soon. And then we go from there.
And clarity, I think it's very important to have clarity. What's allowed, what's the, and these, this is, there's a lot of confusion.
Can I just ask a question to the group though, real quick? Um, so we've been using this format for a while, um, in policy committee. Was this helpful to you to see what the policy is, where we, what we've changed, et cetera? That works? Along with the highlighting within documents?
Yes.
So, yes, good. Okay, so for the new board members, first reading, we're done. If you have any outstanding questions, even, even after we leave tonight, that may be popped in your head afterwards, email me. Um, I will get the answer back to you on your question so that at the next reading, we can take a vote on these policies. That's generally how we work it. So that gives you a couple of weeks typically to get an answer and, and be able to vote. Okay? Thank you guys. Um, I think we decided to copy everyone or just send it to me?
And I get it back and I get an answer.
Just send it to me. I will keep track of every question by policy number and then I will get the answers to you guys. That's, that's the way we did it last year.
Don't copy each other?
No.
And most of it.
It's helpful if we see each other. Well, I share what everybody, I share everything to everybody. So just like we did last year. I give you everybody's question with everybody, with the answer the district gives me, but you, everybody doesn't need to see your question in an email, so we get tons of emails. So I get tons of emails. You will. If there are tons.
That's great for all our questions.
I will get a response for everybody's question.
Does anybody else have any questions, comments, or whatever, respect to any of these policies? Great, thank you. Okay, next we have public participation. Is that correct? So public participation has to, um, any school district business, not just the action district, although if you missed an action item, we certainly can speak about it now. This session lasts thirty minutes. Um, step up supporting with state of name, school affiliation, your previous remarks to the board. Um, again, pursuant to policy, uh, twelve-thirty, fourteen-hundred and third, two-forty, please do not address your remarks with respect to any particular student or staff of the Suffolk Central School District. One up, yeah?
Good evening, board. Um, my name is Andrew Dale, um, uh, from Conneron Elementary School, uh, in Suffolk, New York. Uh, I know that we were reviewing a bunch of the policies and everything else, but I was just curious, um, approximately four months ago, I had, I had notified certain people in the district, um, that there was a flaw in one of the policies in reference to resolving issues. Uh, they have a resolving issue policy where five out of the eight resolutions is to go to the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. And I think I can say that, that, uh, a particular bill it because that in the leadership chart, it still don't exist. So I'm pretty sure that, you know, we're not going to get a lot of complaints this year because five out of the eight passive resolution go to a dead end or you can't make any sort of resolution. And there's also, uh, section in section one thousand, number fourteen-hundred of the policies. I don't know where the public complaints comment comes in. Um, there's a whole public complaint, um, policy, which I don't know how that fits in with the other policy. They seem to kind of overlap one another or somehow, but basically says that any public complaints will eventually be sent over to the superintendent who will then resolve them, um, investigate them, report them and find some sort of resolution. I just wanted to bring it to your attention that for reviewing all the policies, um, you know, I like policy, so I'm sort of a policy guru. I sit up at night and I read them. So, um, I just wanted to make you aware that, um, that is probably something that, that we're going to want to address, um, going through the whole new branding and everything else at the school, that we want to be that premier school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Schmold Loom and I am from Monty Spring Valley area and my kids go to private school, but I was very impressed, um, listening to, uh, the new distinct branding that we're putting out there because, um, I'm sure that you guys are quite familiar that, uh, we are under the East Grand Paul School District and we have issues, uh, now with our kids where, um, some of their services are diminishing and, uh, we are not looking to buy in as much or be in a, in a district that don't have the full service, especially with the kids, um, that we have and the schools that we have and the needs that we have. So I was very happy and, um, more on a positive note coming here and congratulating on the new, uh, distinct brand, as it was called, Suffolk Central School District. So for sure, there is no confusion knowing where we at and, um, uh, we, we have heard and obviously, as you know, we are a close knit community and we're travels and, uh, we found out that, uh, this is going to be a, its own like, so to say, branding and its own school district, which would make us happy to, um, uh, and once we have houses in this area, which I'm sure you, you may know that the Hillburn area and Suffolk area, we're looking, um, for houses and schooling and a, a very close friend, uh, that is very close to our community as, and, uh, has been so for many years, um, doing different services and we know him very well. It's also recommended that, that the only issue would be transportation. We understand that, uh, we would need to get houses closer to the schools and, well, uh, to the building, so to say, to the area where the school's going to be so that we don't have an issue with transportation. But other than that, it seems like this will be a perfect fit for the, uh, close knit Jewish city community to have, uh, uh, its own brand of, beyond the, the new branding of the, um, uh, Suffolk Central School District. And, um, it was just nice and a positive to come here and put faces to, uh, all the, to the names that we all hear, what's going to be going on. And, um, we wish the, the brand good luck and hopefully we'll be seeing a lot of, um, uh, we'll be seeing more of us, uh, vice versa in the near future, once we gather. It's all positive, no? Have a good night.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, seeing none? Oh, I don't, oh, sorry.
Hey, this is my first time I'm here, um, in vocal health. Uh, I just wanted to mention that.
Sorry, did you say your name or?
Raphael.
Raphael.
Uh, I just wanted to mention that America's built up diversity and being together, you have the standards, you have the fault and, uh, we all work together, we can accomplish a lot more and it's not, it's not so difficult, you know, it, it, and having buses done the way, uh, accommodating different age schools, uh, different children, having young children that went around a long time is not, uh, unfortunate for the children and, uh, scared of bad, you know, all those things, you know? You know, we have to try to help the children as much as we can and, uh, any way you could accommodate it or, uh, make it, uh, make this work, everyone should be happy, uh, you know, to be beneficial to everyone. And, uh, I really appreciate the success that can be done, you know, and thank, uh, have a good night.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else?
Nobody's coming up next. She'll never pass.
All right, so, uh, I will close that portion of the meeting. Thank you for your smoke. We have, um, superintendent comments? Do you have any left?
None.
None? Okay, well, um, it is tense tonight almost and tomorrow is the birthday of school, so for all of your parents out there, enjoy it. For all of your teachers out there, enjoy it even more. And thank you so much. So Chair, raise your motion to adjourn. I'll post to the second place. Teresa, Amani, second. All the members in the class, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, intentions, yes. Thank you.
I'm amazed. We're picking up the rest.
I babysit those the entire evening.
I think more is happening.
Yep, she took herself back.